Good evening, everyone. It's November 27, 2023. I'd like to call the county council meeting to order. I'd like to begin by asking Pastor Cody Edger from Cornerstone Word of Life Church to come forward for the indication.
Good evening. Let's pray. God, we just thank you for this time we have together here, Lord. I just pray for every single person represented on the council this evening that they are led by love today, that they are led in their decision-making process for the betterment of the Madison community. Father God, I just thank you to end their decision process. They lean into the understanding of what is best for the peace of this community and the people of this community, that they are led by love, not by their own biases or their own thoughts or their own things that they have in their own natural mind, but they are led by what's best for this community, Lord. And I just thank you that the council, they tap into the grace that they've been graced to for this position and that they are able to access it by faith. We thank you for it, Jesus, and we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me in the prayers. I pledge allegiance to the flag, as the United States of America, and to the republic of which we are, one nation, under the Do we have any amendments to the agenda?
We do.
The page will come after the prayer.
Well, yes. I just switched it.
We switched it.
Other than that?
We switched it, Mr. Kilgore.
Um, we do. We have an addition to tonight's agenda. This is going to be Resolution Number 2023-404R. This is an amendment to a contract, a fee for the addition of a copier for the facility and grounds department. This will be increased, well, we'll speak about it at that point, but it's going to be added underneath Facilities and Grounds. And then we're going to remove an item from Engineering. That would be Resolution Number 2023-390R, and that is removing a professional services agreement with Prominence Contracting.
Thank you. Thank you for that. The amendment is approved. Roll call, please. Roll call. Mayor Finley?
Here.
Councilmember Robleski?
Here.
Councilmember Spears?
Here.
Councilmember Powell?
Here.
Councilmember Shaw?
Here.
Council President Bartlett?
Here.
Councilmember Denzine? Councilmember Seifert?
Here.
Next, we have approval of amendments Number 2023-21-RG from November 13.
Move to approve. Second?
A motion and a second. Any discussions? Ready for votes. Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine. And the amendments are approved. We have one presentation this evening from Madison Visionary Partners, an update for Kids Kingdom. Melanie Thornton, please come up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Finley asked me to just speak a little bit about the fundraising efforts that Madison Visionary Partners spearheaded to renovate Kids Kingdom. The Madison Parks and Recreation Department, in collaboration with a coalition of community organizations, spearheaded the renovation of Kids Kingdom. The role of Madison Visionary Partners centered on fundraising efforts, engaging with grant-making organizations and individuals committed to projects like Kids Kingdom. Over the course of two years, we cultivated support from 26 direct donors, made up of local companies, foundations, and individuals, including the Rotary Club of Madison, Mazda Toyota Manufacturing, and the Alpha Foundation. MVP also organized fundraising events, three of them to be exact, and a successful brick campaign that collectively raised over $31,000 towards the project. In total, we raised just over $600,000, which includes legislative grant money that went directly to the city of Madison. It's important to recognize that the achievement was the result of a collaborative community endeavor. The Madison City Disability Advocacy Board played a vital role in advising on playground accessibility, while the EWE Foundation and Madison City Schools contributed their expertise to the playground's design. Over the course of the campaign, over 100 volunteers collectively invested over 600 hours of their time to the success of this project. I want to recognize Matt McClelland for his leadership on the campaign committee and for Cory Alfred for being a valuable partner in realizing the vision for this new playground. We want to thank the donors who saw the importance and impact their dollars make. By supporting the project, donors didn't just invest in the playground, they helped foster a space where every child can thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Bonnie. Next, we have public comments. Public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. When you come forward, please state your name and the district where you live. And we will begin with the first comment card that's been turned in by Bob Burns.
Good evening. Bob Burns, District Two. Uh, so two weeks ago, I was in here and just, again, I'm retired of observations. I'm a poll worker as well. And, you know, I'm just, I just want to add my piece about the Lamb of God. Lamb of God, I mean, does anybody ever really get on the other side of county line road to see how much earth is being moved, how many more houses are coming in? Lamb of God has 69 parking spots. Four of those are handicapped. Fifteen will be taken up by poll workers at a minimum come the next year's elections. I mean, we have, uh, Limestone has an election next week as well. But, uh, look at 8,800 registered voters, if 7,000 turn out, that's roughly 585 per hour. And I don't know where it is, how people vote, but, I mean, they have up to four minutes before we have to go in and gauge to see if they need help or whatever. And it's just, it's crazy, I mean, as far as the amount of traffic, I mean, the limited parking, and then this is the busiest road in Madison that I know of, other than 72. I'm just seeking, and I know Limestone is, they're trying to work with, um, other businesses, but who wants to shut down for a week, or excuse me, a day, uh, to have us do our voting? But I'm just, I'm just seeking help to help out Limestone to try to figure out where we can go, because Lamb, we're just out growing lunch, uh, the Lamb of God, I'm sorry. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for what you do.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Please come forward, state your name and district.
Margie Daley, Karen's District. I didn't do my notes today, so I'm just going to speak on three subjects. The curb lights, I'm going to start calling them curb lights because they're not streetlights. They do not light our streets. And I just wanted to give the stats. Who it harms? All children under two with developing eyesight, all people with astigmatism, which is 33.33% of the population, and it causes macular degeneration in 8.4%. So not only does it cause accidents and fatalities, it also causes physical harm to over 40% of the population. Okay, civic engagement. We are now hired suppositive lobbyists, and the civic engagement you get from our groups, which is thousands of residents, and you saw that in the vote against the city manager, isn't good for you. You got to hire somebody in City Hall to take away the public that comes here faithfully every two weeks to a council to speak. And city tax dollars hired this person, Tracy Gillespie, and she is now going to do civic engagement? Is that indoctrination? That's all I have to say, because you got thousands of residents civically engaged here. You just guys don't come to our meetings, that's all. You don't need to hire somebody in City Hall to do civic engagements. Now, let's talk about the city investing in real estate. So this year, we bought every single large acreage that was for sale in the city. Not only did we do that, we bought half a building that had no assessment. So the city has set the price, the assessment price, on commercial property. Is that even legal? Is it even legal? Why, half a building had no assessment, so we made the assessment. And then we just paid a million dollars for one acre in a parking lot. It's three acres of parking lot and a gym. We paid $3 million for a parking lot. And we have raised the commercial real estate value the city has, not the free market. Now, I do want to mention about Lamb of God, we had the opportunity to give them a councilperson by redistricting, but instead, we have two councilpeople that live right across, uh, right at the line from one another, and they have no representation. Across county lines deserves a representation on the council, and we had the opportunity with the redistricting, but that wasn't good enough. Instead, we have two councilpeople that live two blocks apart in the same area. It's ridiculous. You really start, you really need to start.
Daley, is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Please come forward. Being none, okay.
Hi, I'm Jeff Johnson. I'm, uh, District Five, or Whisperwood Lane, whichever, whenever that is. I was looking at the ordinance number on page three, 2023-375, the mending the time for a noise permit, that you can file it from 15 days to 72 hours. And I didn't see a purpose for that, so maybe y'all could address that. But I was thinking, if I was going to have an event and I wanted to get a permit for like a band or something, and I would need the 15 days to be able to say, okay, I've got, the only thing holding this up is me getting this permit, and now I've got it, so I've got two weeks to advertise it. But if I only have three days and I can't get a permit for it, and I've got three days to come up with a new venue, so I didn't see why it was a need to lower it from 15 to three. Maybe y'all can address that later. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
Jennifer Coe, Ashley Estate, District Five. Okay, on the resolutions, um, the, uh, on letter P, acceptance of donation from Madison Visionary Partners in the amount of $492,537 on behalf of McDab for the Kids Kingdom. Okay, I'm trying to understand, there was a, the picture in the Madison Record had a check. They published, um, the photo. It said it was $607,000. So I'm just trying to understand why the resolution says that it's $492,000. And also, can y'all please elaborate on what is a, what's the definition for a fiscal fee, uh, which MVP's taking off 9.6% of these? Um, so that's like $47,000 just on this number, so maybe y'all could elaborate on that. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Coe. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the council? Being none, we will close public comments and move to the consent agenda and finance committee report.
Okay, earlier this morning, the finance committee met, and we have reviewed the regular periodic bills of note on the consent agenda, our appropriations for the Convention of Visitors Bureau, KATAC, Liberty Learning, Madison Beautification and Tree Board, Madison City Community Orchestra. Also, we have HVAC and garbage service for the Fitness Center and Sunshine Oaks. And we have, are accepting the following donations: $250 from Halo Home Care for the Senior Center, and $492,537.16 from MVP on behalf of McDab for the Kids Kingdom renovations. And I move to approve. Okay, I'd like to take a moment and just explain the difference between the amount that was on the presentation check. We did discuss this at the finance committee meeting this morning. And the difference between the big presentation check that was in the newspaper and the actual paper check that we received and are voting on tonight to accept is the big presentation check included all of the donations for Kids Kingdom, even ones that were given to us before we received this final check. So that was the sum total of all of the donations from all of the different entities on that one presentation check. And as far as the fee is concerned, it is a fee that Madison Visionary Partners has included in their, I believe it's in their, um...
Agreement?
Their agreement, that they are going to, um, collect this fee. It is, um, something that was set for their administrative costs, and it is their privilege to charge a fee for their services. Whether or not somebody wants to go through them, that is the decision of that entity, not this entity. Um, so with that, I'm done.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion about the extension? Ready for votes. Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
And motion passes. Next presentation or report, beginning with Mayor Finley.
All right, and thank you for both times pointing out the entities that were funded through the appropriations and also the explanation of the checks. And on Kids Kingdom, had a great ribbon cutting, uh, Madison Chamber led that, um, I guess a week ago, Monday. A couple of things I want to thank, Public Works for all of the efforts that they did. While Madison Visionary Partners helped secure over $600,000 in funding, a lot of revenue was also saved for the city by what Public Works did for us. Want to thank our engineering team because they helped do a lot of the internal engineering for that. And then obviously, lastly, Cory and his team in recreation. Uh, one of the neatest things was that ribbon cutting and watching all the people that were there, all the kids that were there, um, uh, and hearing that laughter that was, uh, silent for a few months as we renovated that, but it is now inclusive and safe. And anybody who wanted to know if Kids Kingdom was one of our pet projects that we, that Madison Visionary Partners was asked to help us with, absolutely. So is the Senior Center. And one of the frustrations I hear is many times when folks come up here, I understand personal reasons that sometimes we don't like Madison Visionary Partners, but when it comes to an organization that's set up to support our city in helping us stretch our dollars as far as we can for community-based projects, those are two of the best ones that we could ever have, and guilty as charged. Um, also, the Christmas Light Show is now happening at Toyota Field. It's in the parking lot. It's from five to nine every night through Christmas, uh, starting this Thursday, November 30th. Uh, the Winter Wonderland will also open, uh, and people will be able to utilize that. And with that said, that's all I have.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. District One?
Yes, I just have one announcement. I just wanted to thank Leadership Huntsville for inviting me to their election political forum in support of Leadership Greater Huntsville. Went to a roundtable with Commissioner Hill and Edwards and Councilmember Meredith from Huntsville, and we just had a great discussion. And I would encourage anyone, particularly anyone new to the area that wants to get involved, wants to know more about what's going on in Huntsville, to look up Leadership Greater Huntsville. They have several different programs from two and a half days to an entire year, and it's just a great way to get to know what's going on in our community, the services we provide, and ways to get involved, and that's all I have. Thank you. District Two?
Yes, um, I wanted to say that I went to the Leaders in Action luncheon that was put on by the chamber, and Steve Perry from our Madison Fire and Rescue did a presentation on how you should, how you should have an emergency plan for your business and for your home, and he did an excellent job. Everybody was very, very impressed. Um, and Mr. Burns, I wanted to let you know that we are actively looking, our city clerk department is actively looking for another polling place in Limestone County. Right, we, we are actively looking for another place. We have not been successful yet, but we are still working on it. You're welcome. Um, the next finance committee meeting will be on the 18th of December at 8:00 a.m. in the conference room. And for the record, we are planning on having, these, all the finance committee meetings this year, the morning of the second city council meeting at 8:00 a.m. And audit should begin in a couple of weeks, the city audit, and so we're looking forward to hearing that out brief sometime after the first of the year. We will be sending out requests to the different departments in February regarding mid-year budget. And another thank you to the city, um, Madison Utilities was able to close on the well and include the updated easement language, and that was successful. It has been completed, and they are very appreciative of the city hurrying that along for them. Thank you. And that is all.
District Three?
Um, there's a lot of, uh, events coming up in the beginning of the month, before Christmas, I think the fifth, the...
Tree lighting's Friday.
Tree lighting's Friday, so it's, it's all on the, uh, website, so keep an eye on that, and I hope everybody had an awesome Thanksgiving. That's all I got.
Thanks. District Four?
I'm in business.
District Seven?
I'm in business.
Hey, I just have a couple of announcements. First, our December meetings will be December 11th and the 18th, because the second Monday in December falls on Christmas. So we're going to have two meetings back to back. I'd like to also thank Recreation and all of their work in putting up the Christmas decorations. And I don't know if you noticed the five new trees behind the large ornament downtown, but I saw on Instagram that it's the most Instagrammable backdrop, uh, in North Alabama. So we might be seeing some extra traffic for people to take pictures there. And, uh, Councilmember Denzine cannot be here tonight because she's caring for a sick aunt, um, and so she could not make it back for the evening. But I know that because she is the liaison to MVP, she would want me to state how much she appreciates, and this whole council appreciates the work that they do and the donations that they are able to get for the city and the many city projects that we have. Next, we're going to move to board and committee appointments, and we have one appointment to make for the medical clinic board. And Mr. Kilgore, this board has been dormant, so could you explain a little bit about what this does and why we need to make this tonight?
Absolutely. Um, we had, the council had enabled a medical clinic board for purposes of, of Madison Hospital. A board was appointed, but I believe that the last term would have ended sometime 2014, and there hasn't been any need for the board since then. Where we're at right now is, uh, some property that is owned by HEMZI that is part of the collateral for a bond that was issued through the board is going to issue its last payment on a bond this month, December the 11th. And HEMZI is requesting that that board meet again in order to satisfy that last bond payment and to, uh, recognize that it has been satisfied. So basically, we just need the, uh, a board appointed just for the purpose of satisfying that last bond payment. And after that, I believe the board could probably disband, uh, because I don't see any additional use for the board. But it's something that has not been active for several years, and its sole purpose would simply be to, uh, tidy up the books for HEMZI at the request of their council.
And there are three members to this board that...
That is correct. Three members that just have to reside within, uh, within the city.
Okay, so council and working with the mayor's office and various members on the council, we have come up with three names to appoint to the medical clinic board, and they are Jeremy Gwynne, Flo Bean, and Dr. Steve Solins. And if there are no other nominations for this board, we will appoint them by acclamation. Thank you, Mr. Kilgore, for bringing that to our attention. Um, next, public hearings.
Good evening. I have one item...
Good evenings. I have one item for your consideration this evening. This is resolution number 2023 dash four hundred dash R. This is a request for an off-premises beer and wine license from Seventy-Nine Sixty-Four Inc. Doing business as Madison Quick Stop Number Two for their location at Seventy-Nine Sixty-Four Madison Boulevard. And the reason that this business is applying for an off-premises beer and wine license at this time is because the legal name of the business has changed, but the ownership remains the same. Everything is in order for this to be considered.
Is the property owner here?
No, they're not.
Okay, we're going to open the public hearing on this item. Everyone has five minutes to speak. If you have anything to speak on this particular item, please come forward.
Margie Daly, Karen's district. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. So a little bit about my history. I have been an elected official for twelve years in the state of New Jersey. I also worked for the ATF on the alcohol side. So I was over five hundred and thirty-five liquor licenses, violations, I closed places down, that kind of stuff. I have been requesting some type of map so that we separate the children from the alcohol, so that we have some kind of cohesive plan at where we are selling liquor. This can only benefit our community. I'm scoffed at about it, but you know, it's one of my pet peeves about the liquor. And I think our children and our community deserve better. And even though everybody thinks it's a joke that I asked for where are all the liquor licenses in the city, how many we have, I put in FOIA request. Mr. Killjoy wants me to hire an attorney to speak to him to get a Freedom of Information request. This is nuts. And then you say there's no civic engagement? Why? I have been trying.
You're going to go out at liquor license at this address. Please direct your comments to that.
So my point is, let's all try to take everybody's opinion about where liquor licenses should, should not be to benefit our community and our children, which we seem to be usurping. Also, I'm glad the bar has an ethics code.
Direct your comments to the council, not to our staff, not to employees.
You know, I thought that the employees of City Hall worked for tax, get paid with tax dollars. So they actually work for us. You guys are temporary. You know, in a year and a half, we're going to have another crew up here. Hopefully, none of you will be reelected. Hopefully. Thank you.
Are there any other comments for public hearing? Seeing none, we will close public hearing. Your motion is second on the resolution.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Spears, second by Shaw. Any discussion? Ready for vote.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine. Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, facilities and ground because we have removed the item under engineering for this evening.
Good evening. We have five for consideration this afternoon, or this evening. Resolution is 2023-395R, authorizing a contract with Microman Corporation for maintenance management software in the amount of nine thousand seven hundred and ninety-two dollars to be paid the initial year and then six thousand eight hundred and four dollars to be paid each additional year and be paid from facilities and ground budget.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, motion is second. Any discussion or questions?
I just wanted to add on this one. This was one of the, when we interviewed for this position, and one of the things Gerald talked about was this software. Gerald, can you give them an idea real quickly of what this does for you?
Yeah, so what this will do for us, we can track each building property by address. So we know where we're spending our money at, we know where we have reoccurring problems at. We keep up with material, labor cost, so we can have a better budget and a better understanding and the workload, not only labor-wise, but just overall budget dollars, what we're spending on maintenance issue.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Ready for vote.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine. Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
And motion passes.
Next is resolution 2023-396R, authorizing agreement for programming for Train Software System for the Wellness Center in the amount of one thousand nine hundred and six dollars and forty-nine cents. This is a one-time payment and be paid for from facilities and ground budget. So this is the software that runs HVAC system.
Move to approve.
Motion. Motion by Powell, second by Seifert. Any questions or discussion?
I got one question on these, both of these Train things. If we go to a different brand of unit, does the software still work?
Yes, sure.
What upgrade?
Mm-mm. Thank you. Yes.
Okay, any other questions?
No, Dan.
Ready for vote.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine. Motion passes.
All right. Next, we have resolution 2023-397R, authorizing agreement with Train for building automation services for the Wellness Center in the amount of three thousand seven hundred and one dollar and ninety-four cents for the initial year is being paid for out of facilities and ground budget.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, motion is second. Any questions? Ready for vote.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine. And Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Motion passes.
So next we have resolution 2023 dash 398R, authorizing a contract with Graham Construction LLC for the repairs to the Main Street Cafe in the amount not to exceed a hundred and ten thousand dollars. And this will be paid from the insurance deductible line item in General Service Department. So Roger's going to pay this out of this budget until we get reimbursed from the insurance company.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion is second. Questions?
Yes, will we be reimbursed for this full amount?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, ready for vote.
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine. And Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Motion passes.
So lastly, we have the resolution 2023-404R, which was added to the agenda. This is amendment to the contract with LaOC Group for an additional copier for the facilities and ground department located 228 Mo's Chapel Road in amount of a hundred and thirty-five dollars and ninety-five cents per month to be paid out of facilities and ground budget.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Powell, second by Shaw. Any questions? Ready for vote.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine. And Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Gerald, what was that address again on Mo's Chapel?
228.
228, okay, thank you. I just wasn't sure what the address was. Thank you.
Hang Legal.
Good evening. Legal just has one item that would be proposed ordinance number 2023 dash 375. This would be a, this would amend the ordinance to change the period of time that a noise permit may be filed. Currently, it's fifteen days. This would change it to three days or seventy-two hours. The first reading was on November the thirteenth, so this would be the night for you to discuss or vote on it.
Can I motion second before?
Move to approve.
Okay.
Okay, motion by Robleski, second by Shaw. Now, let's open this up for questions.
I'm just curious what the impetus was for this.
I believe there was some concern over the amount of people who were permitted to, well, I'll pull you back up. The permits come from the court's office, and there was some discussion, I think, between her and Steve Smith as far as what, if anything could be due, in order to help with some of the problems that we have as far as permitting of the noise ordinance. And I believe that ultimately, there was a discussion about limiting the amount of time for the permits, and that might help address the problem. If we don't have fifteen days by limiting it to three days, then we would hope that that would help with the problems that we're seeing as far as, that I believe that-
So this limits the amount of time they can make noise?
Well, this limits the amount of time that-
From they-
It limits the amount of time that they can actually apply for it. So instead of having fifteen days to apply for it, now, if you approve this, then they would only have three days. So if there's an event that they're trying to be permitted for, they would have seventy-two hours in order to send that in as opposed to fifteen days.
How far ahead of the noise do they have to do this? Seventy-two hours?
If Thursday is the day that they want to do this, they would have to put it in today. It would be three days.
Okay, but how long can they make noise?
This would not affect the amount of time that they can-
Just the permit?
Okay, because I've had a lot of complaints about the length of time they're allowed to make noise because of all of the construction that's going on, especially in Limston County. We have people that are getting these noise ordinances for extended periods of time. Can we address that portion of this? I realize not in this vote, but-
Yes, absolutely. If something, if those terms were brought to me, I'd be happy to look at ordinance and try to change it so that we can limit the amount of time. But as far as the changes that I was asked to make in the ordinance, this was the change made. So I haven't had any additional discussions as far as other provisions, but we can absolutely look at other ways to try to help with that problem.
When I'm thinking about this, I'm thinking of like Toyota Field, and they decide to have a concert, and they've had several rap concerts. Well, they'll advertise way ahead of time. I'm not sure what the need is for this, and if you could give an example of when it would be used? Like, is this for Toyota Field?
Can you give some examples of where this helps you as a city clerk?
Yeah.
One example that I have, a lot of times the contractor's coming to town where they're doing a pour. One example is the hotel that's going into Madison Town Center. He's from out of town. He wasn't aware we had a noise ordinance, and so I had to proceed to tell him about it. And he didn't know about it until actually one of the inspectors went out there to question him about where's your noise permit? We have a lot of that where I'm sure some of them may be aware, but they don't know our policy here. And so I think that this will help because what happens in the interim, they've already ordered the concrete coming. It's on its way. And we don't want to hamper them from doing business in our city. But when they come to my office, I'm simply the permitting person that's getting the paperwork done. We have a committee of department heads that will give us an approval, and they don't take it lightly. They go into and they map this out. They see exactly where the location of the noise, what kind of noise is generated. And I will say, since I've been in the seat, I have only witnessed an extended noise outside of the ordinance timeframe, and that does not happen often.
Okay.
So on the backside of what Ms. Spears is talking about, how would this be, what she's talking about for a longer-term noise versus a short-term concrete pour permit? Are they the same permit or they differ permits?
It's the same permit, but the timeframe is shortened because a lot of them, they aren't even aware we have fifteen days when they come in town to do business. And mindful would be that these are large projects that they're here to do. One other example would be down at Dollar General Market. They're building those storage units there, but those people are from out of town. They were not aware. They tell us that we have the fifteen days. So they are ready to pour within that timeframe.
I'll play this right clear. You can apply for it six weeks in advance.
Yes.
But that just narrows the window. I'm not saying you can only apply for it in three days.
I think I should also point out, we have it very restrictive. We have it very-
You can come in and get it quicker, so it helps whoever. But if you want to apply for it six weeks or two months in advance to get approval, you can do that too.
And I probably should have said, what we have now is that the noise ordinance itself is very restrictive as far as timing, as far as, you know, when you can do pours or make noise. And then you have to have the permit in order to have the exception. So I believe that what the hope with limiting the time period is that more people would have to operate under the actual ordinance if they did not in fact have the permit, if that makes sense. People have to cut off by certain times, et cetera. It's very restrictive as far as the ordinance goes. To have the permit, then you would be allowed to exempt or to, you know, go outside with an exception. That was my understanding of why the limitation would hopefully, would hopefully help with the problem.
If you forgot to get one, you're not limiting, you're helping.
You're shortening the required period. You're not limiting.
So if you forget to get it beforehand, you still have your party. You go, man, two weeks ago, I should have got this. Now I forgot it. Now I got three days. Okay, I'm good. This helps people, not hurts people.
But it does not give our citizens time to find out that they're applying and respond before it's approved.
And if you don't apply within the period, then you have to basically adjust your operations to those very stringent requirements. So you basically, and I do apologize, I don't have the time to inform you, but I believe that you can't have noise past twelve o'clock or eleven o'clock, something in that range. There's all kinds of limitations as far as-
Nobody's noticed anyway, Kyle. I mean, nobody's noticed. You don't know when somebody applies for it. You're not, all that is is for the police, if somebody calls saying, hey, so yeah, they have a noise permit. But you're not noticed anyway. I mean, we don't vote on it.
Would you say this is more-
We get notifications. So what happens is, like, I've had it happen several times because there's a lot going on out in town Madison, but somebody comes in. I mean, it's been with hotels every time, and basically what happens is these guys haven't gotten their permits, and they're wanting, their pours are in the middle of the night. I mean, they start at twelve o'clock and they go to three o'clock in the morning. And they come in at the last minute and they get these permits. So she has to send out an email that goes to me, the two chiefs, and I think somebody else can't remember. And everybody has to sign off on that. So what happens is it scrunches down her time in order to get that approved. So she's trying to back that time up so she's got enough time to send it to the different people. That's all she's trying to do.
But the only thing for that to be effective is the folks that aren't following the rules now are still going, we're going to rely on them to follow the rules.
You are, but here's, the example that's happened is, you know, somebody wants to pour on Wednesday, right? Well, they come in today and they want to pour, or they want to pour tomorrow. Well, they can't do that. Well, they've already ordered concrete.
They can't do it until they go and do it, and then we say, hey, you didn't follow the ordinance, and then we fine them for it. Maybe next time they'll do it. Or they may look at it and go, you know, well, that was worth it. I mean-
Well, and that's exactly what's going to happen because if you're, I mean, if you're pouring, you know, thousands of yard concrete, it's, you know, you're talking about a lot of money. So a business will make a decision, well, it's worth me paying the fine to do that. So, but that's their business. We need to, we need to worry about ours.
We think it would also put more pressure on some of these businesses to work within the confines of the ordinance itself as opposed to just with the smaller permitting period, as I understand. Then they would have to go underneath the existing ordinance as far as, you know, having it cut off by eleven and et cetera. And I guess work to, work basically within the confines of the ordinance as opposed to getting, you know, a carte blanche excuse via the permit. I could argue both ways to be perfectly honest, but with three days, that was the intent of it.
Would they get, can I just add, is this more for construction companies than say, what if Alabama A&amp;M wants to come in and have a very large party and make a lot of noise? How are they-
I would have to defer to the clerk, but I believe that it's mostly construction that we're receiving these permits for.
It's mostly construction. I will say, recently, I did have a company to come in, and they wanted to pour on Wednesday, and today is Monday, and with our current ordinance, they didn't meet the timeframe.
Okay.
And he did have the concrete scheduled, so he had enough time to call and reschedule that concrete for a time that was better suited.
Okay.
And to give us a chance to get the approval from the committee.
Okay, so this doesn't like limit Toyota Field if they want to have a concert. It doesn't harm them in any way?
It's all encompassing, basically. I mean, we don't have it divided, so.
Okay, when somebody gets a permit to have an event or a permit, or comes in and gets their business license, are they not given the information about this noise ordinance?
When they come in to- When they come in to get their business license, we've discussed adding that process to them getting their licenses, but most of them are aware and I don't believe it's given to them in hand on what that ordinance is.
Okay.
They will, the ladies down, they will call up and they'll tell me they have someone coming up, you know, to get the permit.
It's really, it's really affecting people from 10 o'clock in the evening until, I think, 6 o'clock in the morning. These other companies, they can come in and pour, it's just those instances when they're pouring outside of the normal, normal rain time.
Or when they're renovating a Publix that backs up to a subdivision with three new babies in the house. It's a thing. I think that.
They even have a permit?
Yes, they did have a permit, but District Four was noticed about it, not District Two, even though Publix is in District Two, because apparently somebody put it wrong on the paperwork. But that's beside the point. What I'm concerned about is that particular permit came, went from like July to November. That's excessive, in my opinion. It's an excessive period of time to have, to deal with noise.
Okay.
So, and they were doing most of their stuff in at night, so that was an issue.
I probably read that with Publix. It's been working today.
I'm sure, but.
People probably going right down there and using that Publix too, you know, like as far. That's a different argument.
But we don't work for Publix. So we, we need to think about what are we doing to our citizens when we vote on things like this? And how can we make it better? I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing to make the turnaround 72 hours. I don't think that's necessarily a bad thing. I do think we should encourage people to apply as soon as they know when they're going to be making noise, to give us time in between so that, for instance, when a council person is noticed, then they can get that information out to their district. Here's what's going to happen, it's going to be from this date to this date, you know, we're sorry that you're going to be inconvenienced, but you know, this is part of progress. I don't know, I mean, however, we can word that, but.
And I will say this, I think that apart, this isn't anything that you have to legislate on or change the ordinance over, but during the actual permitting process, the feedback from the chiefs, you know, from Councilman Powell, you know, may be to say, this is the application, however, we want you to alter it before, you know, we're willing to approve it. So I believe that there's a lot that can be done during the permitting process that doesn't necessarily have to be changed in the ordinance. If they put something in that looks excessive for too long a period, if there's input from, you know, all those people that the clerk circulates that application for the permit for, they may be able to send back and say, we won't, we will not accept this as submitted, but we will ask you to make these changes. So that could be part of the process, but that would not necessarily require any amendment to the ordinance.
I will say that I've had that happen. We did have a request for a event that was on Hughes Road down there and both of the chiefs declined it. And given their expertise on being able to enter, exit, can we get a fire truck in there? I mean, they do a great job of assessing the situation before they put us in a situation and we have had several that were not approved. And that is for businesses that want to have, after our events, we've had personal parties, you know, your 50th birthday party, you're going to invite 200 people on a cul-de-sac. It's happened, but you know, we rely on our experts, you know, we involve our planning department, police chief, fire chief, and fortunately, we missed one, but we always try to include, if without going or seeing, that the council person is notified and we notify the mayor's office. So we have a lot of expertise out there and also building the permit. A lot of dusting guys go out there and they bring these people, force them to come in because they've seen them out there doing the work without a permit. Those are the ones that I'm concerned about.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you come into our town, but you didn't ask what is our ordinance for this? But it took our permit, our inspectors going out there, doing their job, coming in and forcing those people to come into the city clerk's office to get the required permit.
Have you looked at the ramifications if everybody decided to wait three days before? And all this, I mean, you get, you know, a bunch of these things coming in, do you, I mean, do we, do you guys have enough time to review every single one of those?
These are, these are few and they're not coming 10 a week. These are mostly few and far between and a lot of that's because of our inspection team and the building guys who are with the folks that are doing these projects on multiple steps. And so they know when it's coming, they verify that they'll be prepared to have that. So these are, and these are the exceptions to normal business hours. So there aren't a ton of these, so.
Usually it's just a concrete pour.
Mm-hmm.
And the Publix, whatever they're doing over there, but the concrete pours because you guys know about the concrete, how long it takes to cure, what time you need to pour it and, you know, those type things. So those are the ones that I see a lot. It's a privilege to be able to pour from mid, early morning.
They're normally in your backyard.
They are.
And to cut to the chase, it benefits the city clerk's department. Right, okay. Yep, y'all ready for a vote? Okay. Freddie?
Mm-hmm.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine? Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Kilgore.
And I'll stay up here. Next item we have is under Senior Center.